Called a regular meeting of the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners for tonight, February 17th, 2016 to order. Clerk, can we please have a roll call?
There are ten present and two absent.
Okay, let the record show that Commissioner Sorch and Commissioner Morgan are excused from tonight's activities. Commissioner Anderson, can you lead us in the prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which will greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
I will just want folks to take note that your agendas this evening are going to be rearranged a little bit. We'll be moving Section 3, Communication 16-77 with firefighter promotion up to the beginning of the agenda following our approval of the minutes from the last regular meeting. So at this point, is there any public comment on items that are on tonight's consent agenda? Anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item on tonight? Okay, seeing none, move for the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on February 3rd, 2016. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on February 3rd, 2016.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Communication 16-77, Chief Executive requesting Council of Commissioners concur with the appointment of firefighter Chad Silk to the position of captain in the Butte Silver Bow Fire Department. Chief Miller is away this evening, and so in his stead will be our spanking new fire marshal, Brian Doherty.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, members of the council. For the record, my name is Brian Doherty, Assistant Chief with the Butte Silver Bow Fire Department. I am both honored and blessed to be before you today, and I'm sure that you're aware that through a total team effort from Human Resources, the Fire Commission, and this department, we recently conducted an extensive promotional exam within our department to fulfill a vacant captain's position. In our opinion, this was one of the most competitive promotional processes the Butte Fire Department has ever undertaken. Our department and the citizens of our community should be proud of what our future has to hold with so many worthy and dedicated candidates that were among this captain's pool. This process is filled with so many great candidates that I believe we may have actually forced some of the fire commissioners into an early retirement. With that being said, one candidate stood above the crowd and finished number one on this highly competitive list, and that candidate is firefighter Chad Silk. It is a great honor to be asked to introduce Chad, especially since he has such big shoes to fill. The captain's position he is taking was previously held by me. I have witnessed Chad's growth, dedication, and desire to serve our citizens since his appointment as a young firefighter. Chad was never afraid to get his hands dirty as a firefighter. He had the honor of receiving two letters of commendation, one for a victim rescue from a working structure fire, and the other commendation from a search and rescue call on rugged terrain near Our Lady of the Rockies on a dark, cold, blizzardy night. I can assure you, with how well that I know Chad, the best is yet to come. Chad is here tonight with his family, and I would respectfully request that the council concur with the Chief Executive's recommendation to promote Chad Silk to the rank of captain within the Butte Fire Department. Thank you, and I'd like to call Chad Silk up to the podium whenever you guys are ready for it. I'm not sure how the process goes.
Very good. Mr. Doherty, thank you very much. Congratulations. Mr. Silk, I would like to add and really kind of echo the sentiments that Brian said in his introduction about the process that had Chad standing on top. I received a letter from Steve MacArthur, who's the Chair of the Fire Commission, and he just was kind of blown away. Maybe didn't go so far as to say that he was going to resign his position, but the amount of work and process that went into selecting this individual, rest assured, council members in the community that Mr. Silk truly is the best that our department has to offer for this position. So without prematurely congratulating Mr. Silk, I'll call on Commissioner Foley for a motion.
Thank you. It is my honor to make a motion and to concur with requests in Communication 16-77 and to confirm the appointment of Chad Silk as captain with the Butte Silver Bow Fire Department and place this communication on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Seeing nothing on the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, Chad. See you around, Captain. We have no items that are not to be addressed on the agenda this evening. We'll move into the Chief Executive's report, starting with reminding folks if we will be having a special meeting yet to be officially called for this coming Monday, the 22nd, at 5:30 up here to go through the selection of an interim treasurer at the request of Chairman Shaw and the rest of the council, and so please make a note of that. We'll also be moving ahead with a joint special meeting slash public hearing of Butte, Silver Bow, Anacara, Deer Lodge, and Beaverhead Counties on the Wise River Fire Group down there, and it will be held down at the Community Center in Wise River. That is on March 5th, and depending upon how many commissioners are able to attend that meeting, I think we are planning on carpooling, so there will probably be two vehicles going down, and I'll be working with the county attorney on proper noticing and calling at that meeting because it is a little tricky with three different local governments in taking part in the process. So live and learn. With regards to my Chief Executive report, I think we're pretty heavy on superfund items this evening. I did want to make council members and those in attendance aware that tomorrow, I've been asked by the Montana Tech Public Lecture Series to give a state of the Butte environment up at their public lecture series at the Chemistry and Biology Building. That would be the building closest to the tiers where the Chemistry and Biology Departments are located. That's where I went to class when I chose to go, Montana Tech. And so that is in Room 102 at 4 o'clock tomorrow, and hopefully, I guess I'm just kind of looking to put my 20 years of working in superfund in perspective and then focus in on not just the changes that have been made over the past 20 years, but even the last couple of years as we kind of start rolling towards a conclusion as some of our major cleanups here in town. And so that's at 4 o'clock tomorrow up at the Chemistry and Biology Building, Room 102 on the campus of Montana Tech. You may have seen last week, February 11th, we announced the opening of our first annual superfund advisory and redevelopment trust authority grant process. And so we have got grant applications open for consideration. We opened it on the 11th of February. I want to thank Mr. Cessow, Julia Crane, and then the entire SARTA Board, both voting members and my ex officio cohorts in Commissioner Henderson and County Attorney Joyce for all the work that went into putting this grant process together. And it's going to be another great opportunity for us to move our community forward with some of the monies that have become available to us over the course of our superfund involvement. And the deadline for those applications is March 15th. That would be the week of St. Patrick's Day, so you can get your grant applications completed and still go out and celebrate St. Eros and St. Patrick's Day, which I know we have a communication on the agenda tonight relative to that. The applications are on our website. You can come pick them up at the Planning Department, and if you want a staff contact helping answer questions or guidance in regards to how you submit a grant application, Julia Crane in the Planning and Superfund Division is available in that capacity. And lastly, this is something that we've been working on for several months and are pleased to announce, you know, we've been, we being Butte Silver Bow, the local government, and a member of the negotiating team for the consent decree, find ourselves in a unique position in that we are a local government, and we do our best to try and report the information that goes on in those negotiations, confidential as they are, according to the federal judge's order. And so if you recall, a couple of months ago, John Cessow was our superfund coordinator on behalf of that entire negotiation committee after much haranguing by us with the other members of that group, put together a very in-depth column that kind of gave an overview of where we were in the consent decree process. And it was 1,500 words. It was, to use that old analogy, like trying to grab a drink out of the fire hose, because we were catching up on roughly two full years of consent decree negotiation content and trying to boil it down into something that our local government and our citizens could understand. We have made a lot of progress moving ahead now, and one of those pieces is going to be that I would like to extend the offer tonight to this governing body for one or two of you to perhaps consider joining our negotiations team. It's going to be an arduous process. I want you to at least know what the time commitment involves. It's a minimum of eight to 10 hours a month. One of those meetings is generally, they switch between Butte and Helena, but it's a full day of commitment just to be at the meeting itself. There's sometimes an additional call or two that takes place, and so that's where the additional couple hours come in, plus any hours that you would like to put into reading the materials in preparation for the negotiation meetings. And so we have been asking for this for a while, and it's something that I think we've received concurrence from our partners on the CD negotiations team. Be known that you will have to sign the same confidentiality agreement that all of the members state. So while we will be extending the role for a commissioner or two to be part of this team, it's not something that you'll be able to come back and share information with your constituents with as per the judge's order, but we feel that it's good to have a couple more elected officials who are representing our community involved in that process, if for nothing else, just to observe and see how things are being done. And so I would leave it up to this body to decide who the one or two people are that would take part in this process. And on top of that, we've also gotten concurrence from the group that in an effort to let people drink from a cup rather than a fire hose, we're going to attempt to have some more regular updates on where we are with the consent negotiation process from a content standpoint. And so I would couch it as a significant change in the way we interact with not just the negotiation team, but the fact that our public should find some comfort knowing that we're going to have a few more members of our elected body at the table, and that we'll also be able to provide some more updates on what's going on at these consent decree negotiations. So that would be the final superfund update status that I have. And if you guys could talk amongst yourselves over the next week or so and let me know when you might want to be available for this. We do have some upcoming consent decree meetings in March, so sooner would be better on selecting the individuals from this body. So look forward to working with whoever the folks may be. And lastly, another good bit of news to report is that if you recall with the phasing out of the CTEP program, and it's now called the Transportation Alternatives Project, Funding Alternative Project or Program through the Montana Department of Transportation, we have been given notification that we are successful in being awarded a $330,000 transportation alternative grant that will go entirely towards sidewalk improvements, primarily in the Clark's Park area, the NCAT and Hillcrest School area, and the East Middle School area to supplement, you know, some of our more used areas and also to complement the Safe Routes to School Program. If you recall, it wasn't that long ago when this body discussed what some of the priorities were for the last CTEP grant that we had, and there was some partitioning off of how those funds were going to be spent. We have one of those bid openings taking place at the March 2nd meeting that's on the agenda tonight. Well, this is just $330,000 more dollars to continue that work in upgrading the infrastructure of our community for our kids walking to school and our pedestrian public. So with that, that concludes my Chief Executive's report on what's happening, and we'll move into Section 1, Public Hearing, Communication Number 16-60. Ellen Crane, Butte Silver Bow Public Archives Director, requesting council conduct a public hearing regarding unanticipated revenue. County Attorney, do we have proof of publication?
Mr. Chief Executive, there is proof of publication, and it does appear to be in order.
All right, very good. Ms. Crane?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, members of the council, and Ms. Shaw. I appreciate being able to come here this evening to respectfully request that you authorize us to accept unanticipated revenue in the amount of $56,000. This revenue is awarded to us through a grant from the National Park Service to create an ethnic atlas. This is a cultural literacy project which builds on the work of the National Historic Landmark nomination and the Archives' exhibit activity that we've been involved with for the last four or five years. The project will ultimately reside on the World Wide Web, thereby placing Butte's rich culture on a larger arena. The project will focus on a variety of ethnic groups, and all ethnic groups will be represented on the atlas, but we're focusing on the African Americans' contribution, the Chinese contribution, the Arabic-speaking peoples, and the Swiss Italians. The resulting products of this will be a National Register nomination for Camp Caroline, which represents the African Americans and their timber settlement. Brown Sculch will be also given a nomination form, and the German Gold Chariot. We will have an addendum to the NHL document that includes this atlas, and the atlas will be online, and we'll have a large exhibit that will honor all of our great ethnic folks. This grant was written by Shear Justo of the Montana Preservation Alliance, and she worked with the Archives' staff to ensure that everything was in order and there is no cash match required. Simply our fabulous time services from the governments such as mapping and housing, which has been provided by Kerry Johnson, a good friend of the Archives. And so that is it for my presentation, Mr. Chief Executive.
Very good, exciting. Any questions from the council for Ellen? Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you very much, Chief Executive. Thank you, Ellen, for your presentation. I was looking at this, and I had a problem. I think you probably just answered it all. But it said that there was an in-kind match for housing, and that's being taken care of, it sounds like. There's also one for office space and other. Imagine the office space, you'll just have them be working out of the Archives' building?
Yes, they'll just use the public areas.
Okay, so they'll be using the public area of that, and everything else is taken care of. Sounds like a great program, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing.
Thank you.
First call for proponents. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the unanticipated revenue coming from this grant? Seeing none, we would open the call for opponents. Are there any opponents? Last call for opponents or proponents. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Moving into our consent agenda, now is the time for any segregations or amendments. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I just want to make a friendly amendment on Section 2A, one committee, the whole report, Judiciary Committee report, Public Works Committee report, and the Finance and Budget Committee report. All of those are dated the 17th, today's date, and they should have been dated the 10th. So I'd just like to make a note on the record that those dates should be changed on the permanent record. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Any segregations? We have no segregations. So with that, Commissioner Shaw?
Wow, thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. This makes it easy. I move to approve the consent agenda, A 1 through 5 with the friendly amendments made, and B Communications 1 through 17.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We've already addressed the communication under Section 3, moving into our Section 4, ordinances and resolutions to be referred to judiciary. Please take note of Council Bill Ordinance 16-3 and Resolution 16-8. Section 5, ordinances for second reading. First one, clerk, can you please read the title?
Council Bill 16-2, Ordinance 16-2. The ordinance establishing a new chapter of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, BSBMC, to be numbered 8.02 and to be entitled vacant buildings, establishing registration procedures, establishing provisions for enforcement, providing for a penalty, and providing for an effective date hearing.
Very good. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to place Council Bill Number 16-2, Ordinance 16-2 on second reading, and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anything on the question? Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Chief Executive. Just indulge me here for a second, but this is really the first opportunity that the full councils had a chance to look at this resolution or this ordinance. And the idea of vacant buildings, I think there were some media coverage that was very well done, but it might have left out some details about what we describe or what the actual definition of a vacant building is. And I was going to call on Brendan and ask him if he could just on the record state what that means for us.
Very good. Commissioner McDonough?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. As the ordinance reads, Section G, vacant building, it's defined as a building that is A, unoccupied and unsecured, or B, unoccupied and a dangerous structure, or C, unoccupied and posted, or D, unoccupied and has city-county code violations, or E, posted and illegally occupied.
Very good. Commissioner Shaw?
Just to follow up, thank you, Brendan. I just wanted to show that this does not refer to any empty or vacant building. There are inclusions in there that have to be met to meet that definition. So there's criteria that needs to be met. And I had two people call me today and ask me about any empty building, and I said, no, that there are special conditions that would preclude them to have this vacant building application. So I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I read through this ordinance quite thoroughly, and I do have some concerns about it. I kind of think it's another ordinance that's going to cause a little more work for the county without much effect. I think that it's going to be one other ordinance that's a little bit tough to enforce, and I don't like the idea of people having to register their building. I mean, we've got a tax system that kind of does that, and it just seems to me that'd be something that I have a tough time going along with a lot of the wording in it. And I think everyone should read through it very thoroughly before you cast your vote on this, because there are some things in there that are a little deeper than what it just reads in the front line. So I'll be in opposition to this tonight. Thank you.
Okay, very good. On the question, Commissioner Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. With all due respect, Jim, I've got to disagree with you. I think this is a great ordinance, and it's a step in the right direction for a lot of these vacant buildings that are uptown that somebody slaps a piece of plywood on them, and then nothing is done with them for many years. If we can get them registered, if they meet the criteria of this ordinance, then at least the county has the right to go in there and inspect it and see if the roof starts to leak, and then they can be, the building department can get after the absentee landlords to get something done to them before they fall in further disrepair and get turned back to the county. And then pretty soon, we're in a fight up here trying to decide what we're going to do, whether demolish it or try to get rid of it in another way. But I think this is the first step in the right direction. And in judiciary, we did make a motion to amend this on the definition. We were going to change, we changed the "ands" to "ors", because if you had a building that, we'll just take, for example, the Exerdance Building. It's boarded up, and it's unoccupied. But they don't fall into this because it's secured, but it's unoccupied. So if you put "or" in there, they would at least have to register that as a vacant building. It would get inspected by the county, and we could prevent further problems like the Deluxe and the other buildings that have come into disrepair. I therefore am in support of this ordinance.
I would add that this is one of the recommendations that we were able to move forward with that was part of that community progress report that we received a grant on that a couple of years ago. And so this is, there was several recommendations in there. This is one of the toothier ones, for lack of a better term. And so it's good to see it finally come into the floor. And that being said, I would concur with Commissioner Fisher that I would urge you all to read it and ask questions if you have anything on it as we move forward in the second and final reading. Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you very much, Chief Executive. Just kind of to reiterate what Commissioner Palmer said, this is a good ordinance, and I will be supporting it. One of the main things that I think this does is it's an opportunity to address some of the criticism that I believe we've all had about government in the past, that more often than not, we're acting reactively. We find a situation, and we're trying to react to it. What this allows us to do is it gives us an opportunity to, for once, kind of take that first step forward and to proactively go after a problem and try to find solutions to a problem before they become a greater problem. And I think that's something very important to have in our arsenal. So I think I would urge everyone to support it for those means alone, but definitely do read it.
Very good. It is, it's a tool to add to our toolbox. And when you live in a state that allows three years of delinquent property tax before you can really do anything about it coming into the county's hands, I think any tool to add to that box is one to consider. So with that said, this is a roll call vote, so please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
It didn't record. I'm sorry.
Okay, so let's recast our votes.
Ready? Are you ready, Laura?
Are you ready, Laura? Okay. Everybody in? Okay, please record.
Record again. Hold on.
Sorry, there.
All right. Third time's a charm. Everybody in? Clerk, can you please record?
Nine aye, one nay.
Okay, ordinance passes. Section 6, ordinances and resolution for final reading, number 1. Can you please read the title, and can you please read it into the microphone, Tracy, so you get a good recording for us to transcribe and for our folks on the radio? Thank you.
Council Resolution Number 16-3, a resolution granting conditional approval of the preliminary plat of the Copper Fox Estates, amending Blocks 1, 2, 3, and 4 of the suburban tracks subdivision of the City and County of Butte-Silver Bow, State of Montana, providing for the repeal of all parts of resolutions in conflict herewith and providing for an effective date herein.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to place Council Resolution 16-3 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, please cast your votes. All votes in? Clerk, can you please record?
Ten aye, zero nay.
Okay, motion passes or resolution passes, excuse me. Number 2, can you please read?
Council Resolution Number 16-5, a resolution of necessity declaring an infrastructure deficient area exists within the city and county of Butte-Silver Bow, Montana, in an area known as the South Butte Industrial Park, and that investment in infrastructure in that area is necessary in the interest of public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city and county of Butte-Silver Bow, State of Montana, and providing for an effective date herein.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
I move to place Council Resolution 16-5 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, please cast your votes. All votes in? Clerk, can you please record?
Nine aye, one nay.
Okay, resolution passes. Section 7, we have a suspension of the rules for final passage on two resolutions. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move for the suspension of the rules for the purpose of passing Resolution Number 16-6, can I do them together, I mean, and Resolution Number 16-7, by waiving subsection 7 of Rule 36 of the Rules and Order of Business of the Council of Commissioners, thereby having it considered for advanced passage without reference to the Judiciary Committee.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Please cast your votes. All votes in? Clerk, can you please record?
Nine aye, one nay.
Okay, rules suspended. Resolution 16-6, can you please read the title?
Resolution Number 16-6, a resolution authorizing the submission of an application with the Department of Commerce of the State of Montana for Big Sky Economic Development Trust Fund Program under the terms of the Community Development Act of 1974, 42 USC 5301, as amended.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
I move to place Resolution Number 16-6 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Nothing on the question? Seeing none, please cast your votes. All in? Please record.
Ten aye, zero nay.
Resolution passes. Number 2, can you please read?
Resolution Number 16-7, a resolution authorizing and approving the sale of certain parcels of tax-dated real property owned by the City and County of Butte-Silver Bow, State of Montana, and providing for an effective date herein.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
I move to place Council Resolution Number 16-7 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, please cast your votes. All in? Clerk, can you please record?
Ten aye, zero nay.
Okay, resolution passes. At this point, is there any public comment on matters that were not on this evening's agenda? Any public comment on items that weren't on the agenda? Please state your name and address, sir.
I'm Larry Jewell, I live out on 1127 East Second Street. I kind of messed up here, I think, because I didn't make the comment earlier. It's good to see that the resolution on the vacant buildings has passed. My question was why were the fees so low? Because there's no motivation involved for people to fix things up if it's only $25 a year. And to notify those people that they should probably come and register those buildings is probably more than that. And then when you include the fact that we're now going to have inspectors going into those buildings to look at all of that stuff to determine whether it's not, again, as a cost to the city, it's not being reimbursed. Many of these buildings in our neighborhood down there by the Mission, we have several that are in bad shape. They do the same kind of thing, they board them up and leave them until they completely cave in. So I just wondered why we don't have fines that actually motivate people to do something. Many of these people don't even live here. So finding out where you're going to send that stuff to, the time to research, the time to notify them, everything else, it's got to be sent by registered mail. All that stuff is more than $25, and a $500 fine for not registering seems like it's kind of, you know, it doesn't seem worth the effort. And again, he mentioned the fact there that, you know, we're doing something here that, again, we're not penalizing people, you know, they aren't going to pay the $25 a year, they don't pay the property taxes and place time they caves in, and then the city pays to have it removed. So I just wondered why we didn't put fines in there that were meaningful and, you know, actual penalties opposed to just, you know, a nuisance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jewell. Any other public comment on matters that were or weren't on tonight's agenda? It's perfectly fine. We're flexible. Okay. Seeing none, move into the calendar of other meetings and events. Please take note, I would like to add that I did forget, yesterday we had one of our finalist candidates for the IT manager come in and give a presentation over at the Butte Public Archives Auditorium. We have another finalist that will be coming in next Thursday, February 25th, at 4 o'clock at the Butte-Silver Bow Public Archives. So I just wanted commissioners to know that we didn't have anybody at the first one other than staff and IT. So this would be a good opportunity to come see who we're considering and give us your opinion, because it's certainly open for consideration. Any other meetings or events that we need to know about?
I'll see you on Monday night, 5:30.
Right on. Okay, motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed?